Hey Roger.
Hi Roger.
Hey.
I'm just gonna watch it.
Musical chairs.
Nicole, you would not have an extra copy of this?
Yeah.
You know, I was thinking...
Is everyone just really quiet, or did I lose sound?
Oh yeah.
Park and Rec, like you always do?
Mm-hmm. Or make lasered them.
Need to do it?
I don't have sound, shoot.
A new one? Yep. Eric's coming through. Very clear.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
Yep. Good afternoon and welcome to the annual New Ulm City Council meeting. Today's January 5th, 2021, it's 4:30 PM. Our first item on the agenda is a public meeting notice to conduct this meeting by teleconference. Councillors, I'd entertain a mo— we have one councillor calling in today, so I'd entertain a motion to have the public notice conducted and— conduct meeting by teleconference.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye. Oh, no, we have to do roll call. Nicole, could you please call roll?
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Warmka?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Vice President, before we proceed, could you identify for the record the councillor who is participating electronically?
I can't, I'm—
Could you identify for the record the councillor who's participating electronically?
Oh, yes, councillor Eric Warmka is calling in tonight. Thank you. Second item on our agenda is the oath of office. Mr. Hipper?
This time I'd like to administer the oath of office to the council president and the two councillors who are renewing their terms. After you have completed stating the oath, if you could please sign the written oath and return that to our finance director so she can complete that. To be as efficient as possible, I'd like to administer these simultaneously. So to do that, if all three of you could please stand and raise your right hand, and what I'll be administering is the oath that I've put in front of you. So as we do this, you'll state your name and the office to which you've been elected. So aye, if you repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
Andrea S. Spector.
Do solemnly swear—
Do solemnly swear.
—will support the Constitution of the United States—
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
—of the state of Minnesota—
And of the state of Minnesota.
—faithfully and impartially—
And faithfully and impartially.
—discharge the duties—
Discharge the duties.
—the office of—
Of the office of—
Ward 1, third ward councillor.
Councillor at large.
Ward 1 councillor.
And council president.
Council president.
Yep. Of the city of New Ulm—
Of the city of New Ulm.
—in the county of Brown—
In the county of Brown.
—of Minnesota—
In the state of Minnesota.
—to the best of my judgment and ability—
To the best of my judgment and ability.
—you got.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and based on that, I'll turn the meeting over to Andrea.
Thank you Les. Item number 3.1, consent agenda, councillors, what are your wishes?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, we have to—
Roll call on everything, every single thing tonight.
Okay. Director Jorgensen, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Warmka?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 4.1, 2021 appointments of the city council.
I would recommend we just walk down through each one, but I'm open to—
Mm-hmm.
Yep. If I want to pass it, we've done.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
All right. Annual appointments, vice president of the city council, Les Schultz.
I'm welcome, or willing to contend—continue in that role.
Thank you. City attorney, Roger Hipper.
We— it says, the assistant city, Tom Borg, and so that should be stricken?
It should be stricken, that's correct.
Okay. We wanted to say, in case you get in some help—
There would be any assistance, they would—they would properly come back before the council to be formally appointed.
All right.
Thank you.
Official newspaper of the city of New Ulm, The Journal. Fire department officers, first chief assistant chief—first assistant chief Aaron Wilford, second assistant Melissa Visser, fire marshal Trent Zabel. Just keep going. Officials to designate and invest surplus funds in behalf of the city council and public utilities commission. City manager, Chris Dalton, and assistant—finance director, Nicole Jorgensen, and assistant finance director. Designated depositories for the funds of the city and public utilities commission, charter section 124. Number 1, Citizens Bank Minnesota. Number 2, Alliance Bank of New Ulm. Number 3, Wells Fargo Bank. Number 4, France and Bank and Trust. Number 5, United Prairie Bank of New Ulm. Number 6, Wells Fargo Advisors. Number 7, Bank Midwest. Number 8, Stiefel Nicholas. Number 9, Oppenheimer and Company Incorporated. Number 10, Minnesota Municipal Money Market. Number 11, Morgan Stanley Smith Barney LLC. And number 12, Multibank Securities Incorporated. City council representative on the cable communications and advisory board, Les Schultz. City council represents—representative on the planning commission, councillor Mack. City council representative on the heritage preservation commission, councillor Christian. City council representative on the economic development authority, council president Bedgar and councillor Schultz. City council representative on the park and recreation commission, councillor Christian. City council representative on the renew committee, local option sales tax, councillor Mack. Keep going. Okay. Police commission, charter section 88, Andrea Leeser, her first appointment. Term expires December 31st, 2023. Airport commission, there are 2 open roles for appointment. Personnel committee with an indefinite term, city council president, councillor Bedgar, councillor Schultz as an alternate, and city manager, Chris Dalton. Organizational representatives with indefinite terms. For the Blandin Group, city council president Bedgar and city manager Dalton. Brown County Solid Waste Advisory Board, councillor—
That was councillor Fisher.
That was councillor Fisher.
And, I was just gonna mention on item number 3, councillor Fisher was also part of the personnel committee.
Okay.
So I don't know how you wanna work with that, if—you and councillor Warmka wanna pick up those roles, or do you wanna do a discussion at the end, what's your—
Councillor Warmka, how would you feel about being on the personnel committee?
I can pick up the role.
Okay. So we're just gonna circle back to the—
The solid waste advisory board?
Mm-hmm. Solid waste advisory board.
Again, that was councillor Fisher.
Is there anyone that would prefer to be on that? And Roger, do you know if that's a role that needs to be filled?
My understanding, it only meets once a year, very, very seldom, twice a year.
Okay.
I could take that role too.
Your discretion to select that, yep.
Okay. Councillor Warmka, if you're willing to take that role, I would like to appoint you to that advisory board as well, solid waste. Brown Lion Redwood Drug Task Force, a new appointment for 2021.
And I would take that one, I was on that in the past, and then it just—everything changed, we didn't meet, and then now we're back on, so.
Okay.
I would take that if everybody's willing to.
Thank you Les, yes councillor Schultz for that. Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, Mayor Boiseman, city manager Dalton, councillor Christian. Fire Department Relief Association, I have city council president here, but I would like to nominate Eric Warmka, councillor Warmka for that role.
Yes, I'll take that.
Thank you councillor Warmka. Law Enforcement Center Management Committee, city council president Bedgar will serve as the city's elected official representative on the LEC management committee. City manager Dalton and chief of police Borkert serve as the city's other representatives on the committee pursuant to the terms of the joint powers agreement. Minnesota River Valley Coalition of Cowlin, Mayor Boislin, Mayor Boiseman, and councillor—was this Fisher as well?
I don't remember that one, do you? Where's Chris?
I don't—
I don't know.
Councillor Christian being part of that, I don't know if we had an alternate for—
I don't remember that one.
Yeah, I think it's always been just the mayor.
Probably was Fisher though.
Do you know Roger, Mr. Hipper, if we'd be okay with just having the mayor, or—
I'm not aware of any, frankly, I'm not aware what this coalition does.
Okay.
But there's no requirement that I'm aware of that a city councillor would have to be on this.
And I can fill in for the mayor for the time being.
So we'll just leave it and bring it back if we need to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you wanna officially be listed as an alternate?
Yeah, I guess I'll have to work with you.
Okay, so with Mayor Boislin—Boiseman and city manager Dalton as the alternate. Minnesota Valley Council of Governments, Mayor Boiseman and city manager Dalton. City manager serves on MVCOG Operations Committee pursuant to appointment by MVCOG president. New Ulm Convention and Visitors Bureau, councillor Christian. And Region 9 Development Commission, city councillor, president Bedgar.
And Miss—Madam Chair, I believe the—I serve on the cha—as a liaison to the chamber.
Yeah, that's the one I didn't see on here.
That's not on here, so—
Correct, and we looked back through some of the meeting minutes, and we didn't really see an official how that is appointed, so we would just plan to continue?
It was part of a board meeting when—I think when we first gave them money, the $35,000, we had discussion here amongst the councillors that we should have a rep on the board, or a liaison, excuse me, non-voting member, if we were giving them that amount of money. So that's how I got elected to put on—and put on that committee.
And I think it was just the standard appointment, you know, and then President Becker stated, we look back through all the appointments, and back to 2014, and the chamber board has never been on that list of appointments, so if we can add it, that's—
Okay. Are we missing any other committees or memberships?
Well, on aye here for the renew, Lisa Fisher is also on there, so we're gonna need to—
Say that again?
We're gonna need to decide if we want more than one councillor on that, on the renew.
Oh, yeah.
Because we're gonna be wrapping that up here in the future and to have a councillor rep there.
Do you see a need for one more?
Well, if one of the councillors can't attend, you know, you know, so it's not like there's gonna be a lot of activity, projects are going, but, so.
That was Fisher as well.
Correct, so maybe we could have Eric take that one.
Eric, would you have an interest in that one?
Which one is that?
The renew projects for the reinvest, the local option sales tax.
How often are you meeting?
We haven't met for probably 8 months, I mean, it's—
So it's not a heavy commitment?
Yeah, we—
Oh wow. Yeah, I can— There'll be some details.
I can take that as a—yeah. Yeah. We haven't met since the council approved the final project.
Yeah.
Okay, councillor Warmka would also be added to the renew committee. Any other additions or discussion?
Hearing none, I'll go ahead and offer a motion to approve the slate as described by our chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Warmka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 4.2, 2021 appointments of the mayor. Here we'll be looking to approve the confirmation appointments of Mayor Boiseman. His appointments for the term of 2021 to 2023. We have 1 vacancy on the cable communication advisory board. Economic Development Authority, Mark Peterson. Energy Awareness Commission, they're reassessing the organization of that commission. Heritage Preservation Commission, Al Stabinow and Daniel Backer. Human Rights Commission, Kristin Springer and Chad Gents. Library Board, Dustin Souter, Sarah Berger, and Ting Ting Schwartz. Monuments and Cemetery Commission, Louis Ostfold and Tom Keenland. Park and Recreation Commission, Amy Johnson, Laura Evans, and Jim Bastian. Planning Commission, Dave Munson and Michelle Selner. Police Commission, Andrea Leeser. Public Utilities Commission, Mary Ellen Shaughness. Safety Commission, William Scar, with 3 vacancies to be determined. Sister Cities Commission, Terri Sweeney, John Vorwork, Jan Dolka, and Gary Klimick. Tree Commission, Taylor Schenk, and Arlen Body.
We have the mayor here, is there any—any updates or any changes, or this is still the slate? Okay. I'll go ahead and offer a motion to approve the confirmation of the 2021 appointments of the mayor.
Second.
Second, Ben.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Just a comment and a thank you to all the folks that volunteer on all these committees, they help us do our work, and we appreciate it, and that information that comes up from these committees is incredibly valuable when we're sitting here trying to make decisions, so thank you to all our volunteers.
Thank you Les. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Warmka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 5.1, simple lot division. The North 100 Lot 4, Block 1, Prairieland First Edition.
Good evening, council president, councillors. This simple lot division is being proposed by the owner, Ryan Herzog. The legal description is the north 100 feet of Lot 4, Block 1, Prairieland First Edition, and the street address is 2007 North Spring Street. The property is generally located north of 20th North Street and west of Norths—excuse me, North Spring Street. This property is the zoning designation of I-2, the general industrial district. So when this property is divided, there will be 2 new parcels. Parcel A will have the legal description of the south 50 feet of the north 100 feet of Lot 4, Block 1, Prairieland First Edition, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota. And parcel B will be the north 100 feet of Lot 4, Block 1, Prairieland First Edition, except for the southerly 50 feet thereof, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota. I wanted to just take a minute to note a couple things regarding the simple lot division. One is that there is 1 utility service that services the existing lot. So when it's split into 2, 1 of the lots will be left without a utility service. If that remaining lot would like utilities to service it, they will need to get their own service and dig into the street to connect, and that will be at the owner's expense. Additionally, there is only 1—1 way to access the site from the street, so 1 approach, and that will be a shared approach between the 2 properties. Lastly, at the planning commission, there was discussion on the storage of vehicles on the backside of 1 of these lots, and they had asked staff to discuss with the applicant and the owner what the plan is with that. So we had discussed this matter with the applicant, and he has assured us that he is in the process of removing all those cars, and hopes to do so by the end of the summer of 2021. That would conclude the staff report on this, on the simple lot division.
Just gonna add that the planning commission, we held a public hearing, we had no calls or nobody voicing any concerns on the issue. I was the one that brought up, if you look at your packet and you see all the vehicles in there, and I had asked if we could put a condition on there that we went to prove it possibly, unless the vehicles are cleaned up, because I asked if it's a legal junkyard, we don't have anything for that, or they're not selling any parts there, but it is still a violation, I'd have to refer to Roger on it, of our 863 with storage of vehicles, And it's been—John said during—that staff has talked to the owner previously about cleaning it up prior to them listing it for splitting of the property, so.
The only—the only one question I have for staff members, you know, I don't have a problem offering a split yet, do you want it, conditions in here or not? Roger, shouldn't we have those in there, if we have conditions?
Yes. I think, in my understanding, is the—there are 2 specific conditions that staff has recommended, and that would be recording the resolution, and also committing in writing to how special assessments would be assigned to the property. Frankly, I don't know if Brown County is gonna consider this a parcel split, now that it's being done, tax parcel split being done after the 1st of the year, meaning that the owner is gonna have to prepay the taxes payable in 2021, which haven't been set yet, be based on last year's rate, and presumably that would include any installments and special assessments that would be paid in 2021. So it's gonna come up, but they're gonna need to, for future years, you know, take a position on that, and that's, you know, something we need to get in writing. The other matters that you mentioned are something, if there's an issue with the condition of the lot, and if you would want to include that as a condition, doesn't really apply to the division of the property, but, you know, going forward, if you wanna make sure that this is in compliance, and I'm not personally familiar with these vehicles, I don't know if they're titled, you know, licensed, operable, you know, or what the situation is, but if they're in violation of our code, they should be addressed. So if you want to include that as a condition, I think you could.
All the conditions he said. What he said.
Just for clarification, is there a—
Yeah.
—a timeline you'd like to add to that condition with removal of those vehicles?
What do you typically see, 60 days, 90 days?
Well, normally when there's a notice given out by representative of the city, it's 7 days, and there's quite a few of them. There's some indication that this might have been started already, I don't know what—where the process is at, but there are a considerable number of them.
David Schnobrake, Community Development Director. In this particular case, what we're doing is kind of a subdivision of the property, and how do we tie in, you know, kind of a—something that's actually in a different section of the city code? Aren't these really 2 separate actions that we're taking?
Mr. Schnobrake raises a valid point, in that sense, what we're doing is just revising the property lines.
So right now, we'll just leave that, leave the conditions out?
Well, we can, but it's something where I think the owner needs to know he's gotta comply with the code, otherwise. I don't know, we—I don't know, I'd have to reverse myself, I don't know we can condition approving this division on cleaning up his lot, because that's something that would apply if this wasn't in front of you, and it's really not one of the requirements in the—to comply with this.
The first 2 conditions would typically be applied to, or could be applied to, a simple lot division, so those should continue with the action that you're going to take. With regards to the vehicles, I think that's a—a separate matter that needs to be addressed through a different section of the city code.
Do you think we could have Roger take a look at assessing that then, for the vehicles, and come back with a resolution for the vehicles?
Well, it's really a matter of enforcement, and again, I don't know exactly what the situation is with these vehicles, but if they're a violation of 863, we should be going through the normal process of enforcement, to make sure that—they're cleaned up, and they're taken care of. So that would be something, whether it's through Elwood or the police department, we could make sure that that gets followed up on. There's 1 other matter with respect to this request that I've communicated with Mr. Schnobrake about, I think the landowner provided a defective legal description for 1 of the new lots, and I think that Mr. Schnobrake was gonna correct that on the written resolution that would actually be available for the property owner to record, but we'll—we'll cover that. I think what's really important is just whether or not you're going to approve this with the 2 conditions that are indicated in the staff report.
With that, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading. With that, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the simple lot division of the North 100 of Lot 2, Block 1 Prairieland First Edition with the two stated conditions.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 5.2, simple lot division, Outlot 121.
All right. The applicant for the simple lot division is Greg Thomas, and the property owner is James Thomas. The legal description is Outlot 121, and the street address is 1314 West Ridge Road. The property is generally located north of West Ridge Road and east of North Highland Avenue. The zoning description for this property is the B2, the Service Business District. So, I wanted a couple, I wanted to cover a few more items with this, with this property in particular as well. At the Planning Commission, one of the commission members brought up a question of how are utilities going to be dealt with on this site, and I would just like to briefly explain that to you if you wouldn't mind. I'm going to try to make this work. Okay, so, if this property is going to be split, and they are going to have utility services that service both the building on Parcel A and utility services for the building on Parcel B, they need to be separate, metered separately and not together as they currently are. Currently, water and sewer to service the building here on Parcel B come from down here behind Cashwise through Parcel, through Parcel B to service, which would be the Upper Midwest Management Building on the top of the hill. Since that's the case, if they wish to keep those services in place and functioning as they are, the owner will need to provide an easement across Parcel B to keep those services in place. The storage building on Parcel B does have its own water and sewer, okay? So, that's separate already. Now, gas and electric is a separate matter. They service, gas and electric services, the building, the, on Parcel A, the Upper Midwest Management Building, from West Ridge Road, okay? And then what they do is they go from that building down to the storage building, okay? So, what we are going, what we would suggest is that those be, those be cut off, and the storage building would need to have its own services for gas and electric, so it's on a, on a different meter itself. So, I just wanted, I wanted to provide that clarification for the council. We have also informed the property owner of this matter, so they are aware of that and willing to take care of, of that issue. But with that, staff would recommend approval, and we had one condition initially, and that condition was that the lot division will be effective with the filing of the resolution approving this request with the Brown County Recorder's Office, but we would like to add a couple more conditions to cover those utility problems or concerns that we have. So, another additional condition would be that the easement, an easement be prepared by the owner to allow for the continued water and sewer services across Parcel B to service Parcel A. Second would be that gas and electric services that serve Parcel B from Parcel A shall be disconnected, and new gas and elec, new gas and electric services should be installed to serve Parcel B. And then three, that all utility services serving Parcel A and Parcel B be separated, and that each parcel have its own gas, electric, water, and sewer services with separate metering systems. And that would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Nysley.
John, will this come back then to the Planning Commission for an easement or anything?
No.
That would, that would be a private easement. One of the things I would note is unless and until one of these parcels is sold, I think legally there's an issue about an owner giving an easement to himself. It's not anything that's really enforceable. So, it really would be triggered at such time as either parcel would be sold to a third party, which it gets, that's something into the future. So, I suppose with that understanding, we could probably move forward, and then otherwise they would, I don't know if staff would recommend that they take care of the utility issues before this is approved?
Staff would recommend that.
Before it's filed, rather, an issue?
Right. Before it is filed, we would like those issues to be taken care of.
And you could include the easement, you could include everything that staff has recommended, but I would assume the, the owner, whenever these, one of them is sold, that the person who's acquiring the new lot would certainly want the easement addressed, so... It would put them on notice if it was done, though, anyway. There really be a total, I believe, of four conditions?
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the simple lot division of Outlot 121 with the four stated conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Advanced Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 5.3, a conditional use permit for Stephen Akry.
All right. The applicant and property owner for this conditional use permit is Stephen Akry, and it's to allow the allocation of a storage building in the B2 zoning district. The legal description is Lot 3, Block 83, south of Center Street, and the street address is 1710 South Minnesota Street. This property is zoned B2, the Service Business District, and notice was provided to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property and published in the Journal on December 19th, 2020. City staff has not received comment on this application to date. With staff's recommendations and the Planning Commission's recommendation, there are four conditions with this conditional use permit application. One would be that the applicant will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Two, that no exterior storage will be permitted on the property. Three, that no commercial or business storage uses are permitted. And four, the owner will provide a landscape plan for property prior to requesting a building permit for the project. And that would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Nysley.
Just going to add from the Planning Commission meeting, we had no calls or concerns from neighbors, and we've got similar storage buildings across the street and up the block, so...
And I received one, it's my jurisdiction, I did receive one email, somebody concerned about it, that we might be giving out too many of these in the B2, but with conditions they're permitted use, so, but I did receive one comment.
I'd like to just add from Dave, one of the commissioners also was asking, you know, whether that's the best place to take away a business opportunity, but, you know, David Schnobruck, you know, had thought that, you know, it's not the prime location, you know, your B2 is generally, you know, your Broadway, it's an off-street and on that aspect, touch base on that. And we've got similar storage buildings across the street and down the block, so...
I'll go ahead and offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving the application of Stephen Akry requesting a conditional use permit to locate the storage facility on property Zone B2, 1710 South Minnesota Street. The property is legally described as Lot 3 Blot, Block 83, south of Center Street with the four conditions as stated.
Second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 5.4, Community Unit Project Conditional Use Permit by M&amp;D Properties.
The street address of this property is 1406 to 1446 6 North Street. Property is generally located north of 6 North Street, east of North Highland Avenue, and south of 7th North Street. Following a public hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval with conditions at their December 30th meeting. A little bit about the project description. Lot 5 of the future subdivision would have a total of 3.77 acres and approximate dimensions at 287 feet by 590 feet. The majority of the south side of the property would about 6 North Street, and the west side of the property would about North Highland Avenue. The applicant's project would involve the construction of three fourplex units. Section 9.08 subdivision 3C allows community unit projects in the R3 zoning district with a conditional use permit. This requirement that was assigned to this particular piece of property was done in ordinance number 00-049, which was adopted on July 6th, 2000. And as part of that ordinance, other properties in this general area were rezoned to either R1, R2, or R3. The ordinance, section 9.08 subdivision 6 of the city code provides standards for the adoption of a community unit project, and the project would comply with those requirements. Section 9.80 subdivision 6C requires the applicant to submit a general development plan for the project, and there are seven major components to a general development plan. In the attachments that are part of the Planning Commission's report, you will find the general development plan as attachment number five, and we will look at that in just a little bit. To staff's knowledge, this is the first request for a conditional use permit for a community unit project in the community. And so, there are kind of two parts to the approval of this particular request. The first is that you need to grant a conditional use permit, and that requires that the request comply with the criteria found in section 9.82 subdivision 2. The second part are the requirements found in the community unit section of the city code, and that's in the R3 zoning district, and that's where we have to make the finding that it complies with the regulations for establishing the community unit project that's found in subdivision 6B, and then that the general development plan complies with the requirements of subdivision 6C, and both of those are in section 9.08. Staff compared the proposed project with two other residential land uses that could have taken place on this particular piece of property. In the R3 zoning district, we allow apartment units, and using the standards that we have in the R3 zoning district, a total of 82 apartment units could be located on the property. A second land use that we looked at for the property would have been single-family dwellings, and so, we looked at the single-family units to the north, and then looked at a recent subdivision that took place in Milford Heights Second Edition. And we found both, within both of those subdivisions, that approximately 12 units would be permitted on this particular piece of property, so we found the lot density to be almost identical. So, this particular project, in our opinion, has the same density as a single-family project would have. Now, there are nine different attachments that were identified, and what I would like to do is just go through those with you using the monitors here. So, this is our project area, 5th North Street, North Highland Avenue, 7th North, outlined in red, the area that we're talking about. This is an angled view of the property, so this is North Highland Avenue, 7th North, 6 North. So, we have residential development here and here. We have a twin home right here. So, we're going to have some residential lots here, two, and then we're going to have a twin home parcel right here on the corner. So, the area where the three plaques, the fourplexes are proposed for sit in this area right here. Access to this area would be off of 6 North Street. This is the R3 section of the city code, and what's highlighted in yellow are the particular requirements that apply to this particular project. This is our zoning map, and so, this is the area where the project would take place, and this particular color is, represents R3, multiple family. This is single-family in yellow, and the orange is R2, or single and two-family residence. This is the general development plan, and what we did for the general development plan is we had a cover page, and then we took a second page and identified the six items that are identified in the city code, and the attachment where you could find information about those particular items. So, you would have to go back to your Planning Commission report to see what those particular, you know, attachments were. So, now I'm going to talk a little bit about the site plan. This is 7th North Street, this is North Highland Avenue, this is 6 North Street, and this is kind of an inset of showing part of that, and we'll get to that in a little bit. You can see the units or the structures here, so there's three of them. We have proposed rain gardens here, 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 and here. The developer has indicated a desire to save as many trees as possible that are currently on site. There's two rows, one evergreen and the other deciduous, and so, if that is not possible, he may look then at putting rain gardens on the rear side of the property. Now, the site does drain from the top corner down on the left-hand side in this direction down here, so putting the rain gardens in this location has, has benefit from that standpoint, so we hope that that's what is going to be possible. You can see the driveways that would service the units, there would be four of them. Utilities would be located in 6 North Street, and they're already in place, so all they have to do is, you know, run services to the units. On this particular inset, this is the top unit, so that's that one up there, this is the middle unit, and you will see that there's 76 feet from the backside of the building through the property line. And on this particular unit, the second one, there is 96 feet, and the lower unit here again is 76 feet. So, there is, you know, some distance between the, the structure and those rear property lines. On the site plan, it also shows... On the site plan, it also shows a potential hedge that could be located along the property line. Are there any questions about the site plan? Okay. If not, I'm going to move on to some renderings that the developer had completed for the project. So, this is looking at two units, which would probably be separated right here. These are double-stall garages. Then, this is what the buildings would look like on the site. So, we have three of them. This is Sixth North Street over here. So, you see your driveways. You see the cul-de-sac up on the top. And in this particular rendering, you'll notice that rather than a hedge, we have some evergreen types of screening.
Can you talk a little bit about, more about that, Dave? Because that's one of the areas that the neighbors have a lot of questions about, who's going to do that? Are they going to be little tiny, one-foot-high things? Or can you talk about what your committee's talked about with that?
Well, the developers required as part of the building plans that are presented for the project to also have a landscape plan. And so, they probably are going to meet a good portion of their requirement by maintaining the, this vegetation here. But I think along the backside, we would like to see something like that where we've got some varied height. And I personally like the idea of having evergreens in that area because that's, that's a year-round type of screen.
Right.
But I think, you know, that's perhaps something that we also can work with residents in the area just to, you know, review what is being proposed and get their thoughts on that. And this shows a backyard view. This is looking towards the units to be built. So, now obviously, this type of vegetation, that's going to take some years to get that kind of height. So, then there's kitchen designs. This is what the floor plan looks like on the inside. So, you notice a double garage. I think there is 1,600 square feet in this space. Mr. Buscher told us at the Planning Commission meeting that they will sell it, or can sell it in such a way that none of this is constructed, that you get to choose your own floor plan. Now, Mr. Crawl is here. I can verify that's correct or not. So, that kind of concludes the, what was in the attachments. As I said, the Planning Commission recommended approval. And so, that means approval of the conditional use permit, approval that the project complies with the requirements of section 9.08 subdivision 6C. And approval of a general development plan that complies with section 9.08 subdivision 6C. Reasons for approval of this request included the following: That the request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit; That the project site has access to two collector streets; That with the exception of its north side, the site is buffered from surrounding residential uses by the Pastoral Center and North Highland Avenue; That the north portion of the property has been zoned R3 since 1968, and the remainder of the property was rezoned to R3 in 2000. And the proposed use of the project is permitted in the R3 zoning district. I'd also like to give you two quotes from the housing study that was done by the New Ulm Economic Development Authority in 2017. One of them reads as follows: "New Ulm does have a large number of empty nester and senior-headed households. Age-based projections show future growth, especially in the 65 to 74-year-old group. This should result in increased demand for age-appropriate housing that provides appropriate amenities to older adult buyers and offers a no-maintenance option of ownership." The second quote is, "Attached housing provides desirable alternatives for empty nesters and seniors to move out of their single-family homes. These existing homes then become available to younger families. It is important for the community to offer a range of life-cycle housing options." In staff's opinion, there is a need for this type of housing in the community, and this is an appropriate location for this type of housing. There are a total of six conditions. The first is that the applicant will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Secondly, that prior to the issuance of a building permit for the project, the developer shall submit a landscape plan that complies with city code requirements. Three, the applicant will provide for city review and approval a copy of the documents required for the association and common interest community for residents of the property. This is something that we've required in the past. Number four, and this is something that is also a condition to plat approval for this property, as well as item number five, that they enter into a development agreement. Number five is that they must install stormwater treatment facilities. And then finally, number six, and this is new, the project will be constructed as provided in the general development plan. Now, at the Planning Commission meeting, there was area neighbors present, and the discussion at the meeting, there was some information I'd like to provide the city council with. One of the topics was the location of the proposed rain gardens. Residents prefer that the rain gardens be on the front in the Sixth North Street side of the project rather than on the, along their rear property line. The second item that was talked about is how far the buildings would be from the rear property line. So, we provided those distances to them. The third, as Counselor Schultz mentioned, had to do with the screening of the properties, especially the single-family dwellings to the north. Then the fourth had to do with traffic volumes on North Highland Avenue. And we, we had received an email regarding that from Bill and Joanne Brennan, as well as it was a topic of discussion at the, as part of the public hearing. And I think City Engineer Stadheim, we said we would have him talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Mr. Snowbrink. Madam President, City Councilors, Joseph Stadheim, City Engineer. During my review of this project, I specifically was looking at the traffic loading and how that may impact the traffic on North Highland Avenue. And with the density that we're talking about with this proposed project, it's maybe 12 to 24 additional vehicles that would be up in that area. And I really don't see that as having a significant impact on the, on the traffic, especially at the peak loading times, you know, the 7:30 to 8:00 and 3:00 to 3:30 timeframes up there. I really think that any traffic generated from, from this development will not impact that area greatly. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Okay, with that, that would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Snowbrink. Is there anyone that would like to be heard?
I think you want to just make note on that letter that they were asking for the zoning to be denied. And what we were actually taking action on was a conditional use permit, which are two different things. And zoning is done in 1968 and in the year 2000. So, you know, for R3, so.
This development is, you know, obviously up in my ward, and, and the neighbors have been very vocal. I think they're very hurt by the diocese that sold this property when they said they weren't, and things changed, and they did sell. I think they're very concerned that they'd love for many years to look out their backyard and, and have wildlife, and that won't be in their future. They're just frustrated about the whole thing, that the way it's happened. And, and I absolutely understand what, what they're going through. It's just frustrating. They did say, and I want to bring it up tonight because I think it's important, that, you know, they, one of the things they said when this, when Mike Crawl bought the property, he said, "You just watch. Those sidewalks won't get shoveled." And sure enough, here we get our first snow, and what happens? The sidewalks weren't shoveled. They actually had to be cleared by the city the other day or last week because they weren't taken care of, and just not being good neighbors. And I am very frustrated with that. That's a very highly walked sidewalk on Highland. And, and it wasn't taken care of. And they were just like, "He's not going to take care of it, and here we go." I know Mike's here tonight. I'd like to hear from him about that because that, that just bothers me that if you're developing property in our community, and Mike has done a lot of that and a lot of very good work and really helped with our housing issues in our community. So, something small like this shouldn't happen. It just shouldn't happen if you're running a business and you want to make, the neighbors are frustrated enough. So, I'd like to hear from Mike on that. The other thing I wanted to bring up is when we talked about this several months ago, there was an agreement that the neighbors, Mr. Crawl and city staff, would get together and talk about this project. And my understanding, that's not happened, correct? Just not been scheduled, and it's not happened. I don't know, I'm not finger-pointing. Well, maybe I am. I don't know who was supposed to set that up, or maybe that's the concern, is they, there's been no meeting to talk about what just was presented tonight.
Well, there was some discussion about having an open house, and we did attempt to schedule that. And then the COVID-19 restrictions, you know, hit. And so, what went from being something that we hoped to host in City Hall would have had to have been by Zoom. But we did attempt to make those kind of arrangements.
Thank you. Mr. Crawl?
Mike with Mike Crawl Construction, M&amp;D Properties. Pretending to the snow issue or whatever, it was just a fluke thing that happened. The storm kind of blew in fast, everybody knows. We didn't quite have the snow removal set up at the time or whatever, but just to want to reassure you guys that that won't be an issue. It's going to be hired out privately. And just like the lawn was this summer, the lawn was maintained and taken care of. So, that shouldn't be an issue, you know, in the future here or whatever. So, just to reassure, you know, you guys and the people around the neighborhood, we want to be a nice neighbor. We want to make it, I mean, you know, we spent a lot of money having these drafted, and to reassure people that what we're going to put up there is, is going to look nice. It's going to increase the value, you know. It might hinder wildlife a little bit, but I feel, you know, rain gardens, you know, that's places for animals to, you know, be in there and stuff like that. So, I think that it's a shock to everybody at first, but I think once it's all said and done, it's going to look really nice, and it should fit well in the community, so.
Good, I appreciate that. I really hope that that's the case because it's certainly just one more frustration for the neighbors that they shouldn't have to deal with. And they want, they want good neighbors, and, and to start the project off like that, it just is a little, little thorn in their side.
Yep, sorry about that again. Like I said, we didn't mean to do that, so.
Thank you. That's, I was going to ask a couple other questions, but, but Dave answered them as far as the, how close they were going to be together, the fourplexes, side by side. But it looks like when I saw the drawing, there's a driveway between them, right?
Correct, yep, yep, the axis. And, you know, we had a decision to make. We thought people would really be upset if we took down all the front trees or whatever. So, we tried to put the building so that we had, you know, tried to disturb the least amount of mature trees that are there. And we're going to try to, you know, just keep it, you know, try to, you know, make it fit in there and keep all the, you know, everything we can and make it so it fits in there nicely, so it doesn't look odd, so.
Are you pulling that, that design back up? Because there was some concern about the lakeside addition. Twinplexes were two, seemed like they were very close together, and, and some people were concerned that, but this is just a totally different setup.
Yeah, this is totally different. This is individual, you know, where that's more of a rental situation. So, but yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of a totally different concept.
And there was 76 feet from the back of the building to the property line, correct? And then 96 on the middle one, was it?
Yep.
Something like that, okay. All right.
Say, Mike, while we have you here, Mike, we had a discussion at the meeting. They were concerned about the distances, but will there be patios out the rear to their backyard?
Yeah, there is, there is actually doors facing out that way. So, there might be a little slab of some sort out there and stuff like that, so. But per code, you know, we should still be, you know, the proper distance away from the backyard setback, so. And, you know, these are going to be facing the back of their houses. So, it's not like these are facing the front of their houses. So, it, it should be, you know, it's going to look nice, you know, from a study.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard?
I'm going to go ahead and recommend approval of Mike Crawl on behalf of M&amp;D Properties LLC for conditional use permit approving community unit project on property legally described as part of Oak Bluff's 8th Edition and to be plotted as Lot 5, Block 1, Oak Bluff's 9th Edition.
With the six conditions?
With, with the six conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.1, Set a Public Hearing on 2021 Utility Street and Alley Improvements, Group 1 Project. We will set the date of the public hearing on the 2021 Utility Street and Alley Improvements, Group 1 Project for Tuesday, February 2, 2021, at 4:30 PM. Would I go through the, or do you go through the?
Thank you, Madam President, City Councilor.
Okay.
Joseph Stadheim, City Engineer. This is really the next step with the development of the 2021 Capitol Improvement Plan. As previously discussed, the CIP was reviewed by the Safety Commission on September 3. We conducted pre-designed Zoom meetings with residents on the affected projects on October 14 of 2020, and this package was included and is as presented at the 2021 CIP report on December 1. So, in setting the public hearing, would be the next step in that process to keep this project rolling forward. We will send out public hearing notices within the next couple of weeks.
The way wants to set the date. So, I'll set the date for the public hearing on the 2021 Utility Street Alley Improvements Group 1 Project for Tuesday, February 2, 2021, at 4:30 PM.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.2, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Environmental Action Fund.
Council President and Councilors, before you, you have the voluntary assessment for the Environmental Action Fund. This is a yearly contribution that we split with the PUC. And what this does is this gives us a voice through CGMC to the MPCA and EPA to help with water, water and sewer regulations.
I'll authorize commitment to submit payment to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities in the amount of $1,705.50 for the GCGMC Environmental Action Fund after January 1st and/or before February 1st, 2021.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.3, Skyline Terrace Apartments, Change of Ownership.
Okay, Skyline Terrace Apartments is located at 2107 North Highland Avenue. Within that apartment building are 43 units. Building construction started in 2014 and was completed in 2015. Has a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. City of New Ulm established a tax increment financing district to provide financial assistance for this project in September 2013. With all of our TIF districts, then, there is also a development agreement. And within that development agreement is a requirement that if there is a change of ownership of the property, while a tax increment finance district is in existence, it must be, the change in ownership must be approved by the city council. And so, the, before you tonight, the city council needs to make a determination if the proposed owners have qualifications reasonably acceptable to the city, and if you should decide to approve this particular request, it would be contingent on the signing of a document by the new owners that they agree to undertake all of the duties and responsibilities outlined in the development agreement. And I want to be very specific that in order to receive the tax increment financing assistance, which is paid on a yearly basis, the owner is required to submit certain documentation, and state statutes is very specific about what that documentation shall be. And so, I think it has to, the proposed owners need to understand that that requirement will be, you know, in play, and they will need to comply with that to receive the TIF assistance.
Dave, we've transferred ownership before of TIFs within our community? Sale?
Nothing that I can think of recently. I think the downtown mall probably had a number of ownership changes that would have impacted the, or wouldn't have impacted, but the TIF would have been running during that time period. I can't think of anything more recent.
But, but also this developer, they would have the opportunity, say, in a couple of years, if they didn't want to be involved with the TIF, they could have it removed also?
If they wish to, yeah. We could decertify the district at their request.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good. We have the developer here. Do you understand all the conditions that were stated?
I'll offer resolution and waive the reading approving the transfer ownership of Skyline Terrace Apartments located at 2107 North Highland Avenue from Skyline Terrace LLC to M&amp;D Properties LLC with the conditions that are listed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Finance Director, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.4, City Revolving Loan for Midwest Precision Tooling and Manufacturing.
Council President and Councilors, before you, you have a request for Midwest Precision Tooling and Manufacturing for a revolving loan for $50,000. Just have a very brief presentation on Midwest Manufacturing and kind of what they're asking and what the scope of the project is. So the company overview, they're located at 1510 South Minnesota Street, that is the old DLC building, and they do manufacture and they design and manufacture precision parts and components for the medical industry. So they're fairly new in town, and they'd be using this money to help them get up and running and operating. So the purpose of the loan is for remodeling the facility and purchasing equipment, so that'd be electrical, air compressor, airlines, plumbing, moving riggers, and a softener and RO system, potentially phone and internet hookup as well. The details for the loan, loan amount is 50,000, the interest rate would be 1%, the term would be 10 years, and they do have a job creation goal of two jobs, which they should be able to do within a year, but they do have two years to fill that role. So one would be a toolmaker at $25 an hour, and another one would be a quality technician at $15 an hour. So with that, they do meet the requirements for the loan. We currently have enough money to fund this loan. There's $57,000 in the revolving loan fund, so we'd have about 7,000 left. We do get between 8,000 to 9,000 each month from the payments. They would be looking to start the payments in March, but I will be working with the city attorney to set the closing date. There are a couple of things that they do need to clarify, whether they're using a bank as another to fund the rest of the project, or if they're going to use private investment, and that'll change where the closing date is. The borrower is responsible for the recording fee and the mortgage tax due. We would be taking out a mortgage on the property to secure the loan.
Chris, do you have any information regards to how many employees they currently have with their company, or that they can, that they're bringing to our community?
I think they currently have four, so it's the owner and assistants and two, so they're looking to ramp up once they fully get up and running. According to their business plan and some of their financials, they're looking, when they're fully up and operational, potentially doing about $55,000 in sales, sales a month.
Chris, I have a question. The job creation, is that a required part of the loan?
For revolving loan, yes.
Okay, and what happens if those conditions aren't met within the 24-month period?
Loan would be due in full at that point.
I'm going to go ahead and offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorize an loan with conditions to Midwest Precision Tooling and Manufacturing in the amount of 50,000 from the city's revolving loan fund.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Finance Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.5, Public Works Equipment Rental. I'm sorry, Public Works Equipment Replacement, sorry.
I'll authorize the city manager to prepare specs, secure bids, or quotes, or use a state contract to acquire 2021 John Deere 672 Grader and a 2022 freight liner, liner dump truck in Plow and Sander, the estimated cost of $447, $992. These are all routine and planned replacements, so let's get them on board.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.6, 2021 Mileage Reimbursement Rate.
I'll offer motion to receive notice that it's now 56 cents a mile, starting January 1st, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.7, Park and Recreation Donations.
Hey, this one I'll be happy to do this time. We had two large donations. I'm going to offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting donations offered to the city of New Ulm through the Park and Rec Department as outlined. German Park Amphitheater, the $100,000 fulfilling their matching pledge honoring Enchanted and Jerry Dempsey from an anonymous donor, anonymous donor, and Riverside Park Building Learner Center Materials and Programming, $3,000 from the Isaac Walton League.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Big thank you to our donors.
Thank you. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 7.1, Report of Claims Paid.
Make a motion to accept the list of claims paid in the amount of $7,660,542.45.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Finance Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. If there is no other business, I plan to adjourn.